Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Tuesday, March 19th meeting. I'll start with our roll call.
Mayor Kaylee Clark.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Councilmember Sid Gupta.
Here.
Councilmember Roshi Nofaro.
Here.
Great, thank you so much. Next, we'll do Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Lamb, if you'll lead us. All right, and Councilmember Gupta, if you'll do our land acknowledgement.
We acknowledge that we are in the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Great, thank you so much. So, before approving the agenda, I would like to, I move to amend the agenda to add a proclamation in honor of our city clerk, retiring city clerk. Where is she? She's already disappeared. There she is. Lita Hatchey, prior to public comment, and we'll have a 10-minute recess right after. So, would anyone like to second my motion?
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. And then, would anyone like to approve the agenda as amended? Unless that was already done. All right.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Oh, look at the screen. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All righty. Okay. Lita? You can't hide.
Yeah.
All right. Today, we honor Lita Hatchey, whereas it is with both great respect and a heavy heart that we bid farewell to our city clerk, Lita Hatchey, who has faithfully served our city for more than 20 years. And Lita started as a city volunteer before becoming an employee in 2003, filling multiple roles until stepping into the city clerk position in 2020. And throughout her tenure, Lita has exhibited unparalleled dedication, professionalism, and commitment to excellence in every aspect of her role, ensuring the smooth operation of our city's administrative functions, really, the city council, let's be honest here. And Lita has been a pillar of integrity, competence, and reliability, serving as a trusted advisor and invaluable resource to countless city officials, employees, and residents alike. And her leadership and expertise have been instrumental in preserving historical records, upholding the integrity of our public processes, and safeguarding trust in our municipal government. And Lita has earned the admiration, gratitude, and respect of all who have had the privilege of working alongside her, leaving an indelible mark on the fabric of our community. Now, therefore, be proclaimed that March 29th, 2024, shall be declared Lita Hatchey Day in the city of Samamish. And the Samamish-- And the Samamish City Council hereby express our deepest appreciation and heartfelt gratitude to Lita for her many years of dedicated service and unravering commitment to the betterment of our city. We extend our warmest wishes for her joyous and fulfilling retirement, filled with well-deserved relaxation, cherished moments with loved ones, and new adventures on the horizon. May Lita Hatchey continue to inspire us all with her exemplary legacy of service, professionalism, and civic pride. So, we'd love to get a photo and have a little 10-minute break. So, thank you, Lita.
The kids got their citizenship too, so.
If we could have council join Lita?
We're going home.
You should have put on the screen behind you. Council's on break. I'm gonna look at where we are.
So, everyone's voting to join us in?
Welcome back, everybody. So, now we are on to public comment, starting with Dave.
Okay. Good evening, council members, and mayor, deputy mayor, city manager, city attorney. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you. I'm Dave Osmer, 22433 Southeast Highland Lane in Issaquah. And you're wondering, okay, what's this Issaquah guy coming to talk to us about tonight? Well, as some of you may remember, I chair the Government Affairs Committee for the, excuse me, Providence Point Umbrella Association, your neighbors to the south, at the south end of Samamish. I'm here tonight to talk about consent agenda item number six, the Department of Natural Resources Trust Land Transfer Application. As you probably know, Providence Point is a nonprofit gated, active 55-plus community that's been in place for almost 40 years. As you may not realize, this parcel that you're considering is immediately adjacent to Providence Point's western property line, which is fenced, and we're putting up additional no trespassing signs along it. So naturally, we got a bit nervous when we learned just yesterday that the property might be changing hands. We are, however, very pleased to learn that, learn your stated intent that it would be used for preservation and passive recreation. And we're actually thrilled that you're not going to try to build a high school on it. However, we want to be assured that it will be preserved primarily in its current wilderness condition and not extensively cleared for numerous trails, excuse me, and/or open spaces. Our concern stems from the fact that we're aware that at least two temporary campsites have been situated on the parcel. Making the property more attractive for this use in the future represents a risk to our residents, both as a fire danger and as a possible security breach. Additionally, we maintain a trail on our side of the fence for the full length of the common boundary with the parcel. Our residents enjoy walking this trail and to take advantage of the sights and sounds of its wilderness character, and we would like to see these aspects of the property preserved to the greatest extent possible. We look forward to the opportunity to view the proposed plans as they're being developed, and I thank you for your consideration of our concerns.
Thank you. Deb?
Hi. I am Deb Carmichael. I am the Program Director for Kids Coming Together, a local nonprofit that works all over the city of Samamish in priority. This is Annika, and this is Ira. These are two of our youth board members who help us put together the events that we work within the city. We wouldn't want to come to you with hearsay, but we understand that something is before the council about the venues within the city that are being offered for the last four years, of my understanding, at a free cost to nonprofits within a certain number of uses. That has made what we do at Kids Coming Together possible. At the moment, what we are doing is running events that are, tonight's event was 30 kids in grades three to eight, run by high school leaders, 14 of them, 14 high school leaders, teaching them how to make homemade dog treats to give to the Humane Society. We help pick up trash and debris in the local parks. We are often making homemade blankets, kids are making homemade blankets for the Giving Hope Project, just as a sample of the events that we run. We are only able to do this, and all of these events are free, because Samamish has been so supportive in letting us use places like Beaver Lake Lodge, like the different places at the different parks in the nicer weather, for free up to two events a month. We budget for that. We have heard, Councilmember Gupta, your name has been out there, that there's a legal issue with that, that the city is looking into. We wanted to put just a face in front of you of the impact that that would have. We, at the moment, run at least one event a week for kids. We are always sold out within two days of announcing every event. And I say sold as a free event. They sign up, they register, they sign waivers, and we are flooded. We love what we do, the Giving Hope Project loves what we do, the Humane Society loves what we do, and we want to keep doing it. I can stand here right now and tell you, we could probably still do things with our teenagers, because I'm okay to have them do things outside, even in the colder weather that our winters pass for, but we cannot run half of our events without the venues during particularly September to April, without the not, no fee that you give us. I know it's a legal issue. We really hope that you'll be able to come up with some solution that will work for nonprofits like us, for youth organizations like us. We are also under the foundation that gives us a bit of a public status. I don't know if that helps legally. I'm sure someone here might know little bits about that. I will write email, Councilmember Gupta, Councilmember Stewart, to give you more details about this.
Thank you. All right, Debbie?
I almost jumped up when she said Deb, though, I have to admit. Debbie Trine, been in Samamish now since 2010. Tonight, I want to speak about, in the open meeting, about the open house that was held last night for the UZDP for the town center. First, I never saw any announcement for it. I did hear through a grapevine last week that there was a meeting on Monday, the 18th, but very, very few people attended because it really wasn't publicized. And so, there was a small group of citizens that came, and they were asking questions at one of the tables about how they could best influence the town center so that their concerns could be addressed. I don't know who that was at the table, honestly, but it was obviously someone connected with the town center. It was a simple question, really. How can citizens best influence the development of the town center, and in particular, this one project? The developer told the group that their best strategy was, and motive influence would be to come to the city council, attend these meetings, and let their concerns be known. I then asked, but isn't it too late for this one? You've already got the permit. And the developer agreed. So, at that point, I left the meeting in complete frustration. What was the point of an open house on a project soliciting public feedback that's a done deal? I don't know if he didn't know what was going on, but that was the impression we were left with. It just feels like the city is just not really very concerned about the issues that citizens are raising in public comment, the tree retention, regional stormwater, trail connections with the town center, not around the outside of the city. There's many other issues in the city besides just affordable housing and transit, specifically in the comp plan, land use, environment and conservation, housing, good, transportation, good, utilities, parks, capital facilities, and shoreline. Are we addressing any of these others? We speak to them frequently, and there's no work being done in the public about those issues. These are required elements, and we seem to only focus on that small subset. So, in addition to that, any other decision that comes up is colored by, how does it affect affordable housing? What does it do to transit? There are some things that are not worth sacrificing, like mature trees and their existing forest. It's just not worth sacrificing. I've lived 69 years. I remember when trees were everywhere. We have lost so much already, and it's very hard to grow old and watch the things you loved as a child just be gone. So, I hope that you can find an opportunity for the public to participate in these other issues as well. It really feels like the decisions have been made, and we're just beating our heads against a wall.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
James?
James Eastman, Eastlake, Samamish Parkway. So, I meant to give public comment in the last meeting, but apparently I didn't sign in by 3 o'clock. So, I figure it's probably easier if I just show up and do it in person. So, here tonight, I'm here to talk about DTRs. No, just kidding. I just want to see if anybody squirts, jumped out of their seats. No, I'm here to talk about TDRs. There's some valuable things that you should bring up on the dais so we're not conflicted about this going forward, because this has been in place for about 12 years, and there's some confliction going on. Number one is, we say that, especially in these last few critical area meetings, we keep saying that critical areas provide a valuable public resource, and that's a reason for the TDR program. But when you look at the reasons to actually exchange a TDR, critical areas is not one of them. We use words like forest land or farmland, because there's this really gray area that we don't want to talk about, and that is that we're exchanging a valuable resource, but the landowner gets a zero for that resource, because in Samamish, we use net density. So, we're conflicted there. King County's already talked about that on their website. They use gross. In fact, they even double it, and that's, they address that that's the only way for this TDR program to work. And so, I'd like to at least see that conversation be had. And then, the other question I have is this Emerald Necklace that keeps coming up as the reason behind TDRs. And in my mind, Emerald Necklace, that means a trail around Samamish, not just something that you drive by. So, I think the trail would be awesome, but I question, we kept saying the reason for this TDR progress is the Emerald Necklace. I want to make sure that we're actually getting an actual easement, where when those TDRs are transferred, there is an easement for the Emerald Necklace. I'd hate for us to get all that land thinking that we're going to build the Emerald Necklace and realize that no easement was ever granted through those properties. So, I think we should clarify that, and maybe it already has been, and we just don't want to talk about it in a public meeting, because land acquisition is a sensitive matter. But if we could do that for a trail, that leaves open the option, like, why can't we do this for other desired trails, other areas of public benefit that we want to gain? Like, why not incentivize using the TDR process to go get maybe a connector, a trail to a park, or this, or that, and build it into this program to make it wildly successful? So, I'd like to see those conversations be had. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone else not get a chance to sign up that wants to do public comment?
I did sign up.
Oh, you might be in the public hearing part?
I did.
Yeah. Is it about the transit plan or just general? Oh, yeah, go ahead, Lisa. Yeah.
I didn't know there were two. Lisa Steele, Samamish, Washington, thank you for the opportunity to speak again. I also was here last night. I very randomly heard about it, and I know, since we don't have a newspaper, it's so hard to get the word out. I, like many people, choose to not be on Facebook, and I think a lot of the city items get posted there, which is great. I also heard last night from some of the staff that the person that runs or ran the newsletter left, and so I think that's also why my emails have never been returned. But that is also, I'm really hoping, I know I keep coming up here and talking about the newsletter, but I think that would be such a great source of information if that were a little more regular and informative. I heard from somebody in the community that they recently got a postcard for an upcoming Parks and Rec meeting, and so perhaps for future important developer and town center informational meetings, I know that would be a cost, but maybe postcarding could possibly be a way to inform residents. I found it very interesting, and there were some really good conversations I had with some of the different, the urban planner and some of the staff members about the need for an arborist. That's the other thing I've come up and talked to city council about, and I explained how I had learned that back in 2017 that had been budgeted, but that, just for different reasons, didn't go forward. And they also agreed or shared with me that they thought having a staff-vetted arborist would be a very important piece of moving forward, both for the town center specifically and in, just in their opinions as planners and developers for the city as a whole. And I also mentioned how I had learned about another parallel and very beneficial position of an urban forester position, and they also agreed that those two jobs work hand in hand for environment, for different ways to keep trees that are really healthy, and maybe not for trees that aren't, but having someone on staff that really could help to work with the city council, rather than just someone that comes in individually for certain projects. So, again, I really am pushing for the newsletter to get back to being something more vibrant and informative, and maybe also possibly involving the community on a certain level. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll go to online if anyone signed up.
Per the new reasonable accommodation, those who have pre-registered by 3 o'clock today, please raise your hand if you wish to give testimony. If you wish to speak regarding a public hearing, please do not raise your hand. When a public hearing begins, you will have an opportunity to give public comment at that time.
Hi, this is Mary Victor. Been in Samamish since 2000. I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I'm so glad that you had a little celebration for Lita Hatchey, who's been our city clerk for as long as I've been around doing things. I know, I think she was at the old office when it was over by Trader Joe's. I remember meeting her at the city hall, and she just is always so helpful, so kind, extremely knowledgeable, always willing to do whatever. I remember she used to, I think, like to do the public hearings, so she would work during the days and also do the public hearings on Saturdays or in the evenings, and just did a really stellar job with that. I remember submitting a citizen action request in 2015 through her. It was number 50. It was done on paper. We didn't think we'd ever go electronic, and when I asked, is it, everybody has a cellphone, you know, and if you see a problem, can't you just take a picture and upload it? And I was told that would never, ever happen by this city, and now we have see, click, fix in my Samamish. So, there's been a lot of things that have changed, but Lita's just been the center core of everything, keeping all the records. I remember when she worked with the former city clerk, Melanie Anderson. Melanie had said one time, she said, Mary, you give feedback all the time. Ask for a document management control system, because we really need one. So, I did, and I think it got ignored for a year, but then they finally ended up with one which made city clerk not be quite so insane, but it's still a very, very challenging job. So, I'm grateful for the past clerks, and especially Lita, she's just such a banner and a shining star, and then the new city clerks that we have, that she's trained so well, and all the people that support for public records requests and other things. So, that's super important. I did want to speak a little bit on the Lewis Thompson Tight Line Project. It had a bulletin out that's saying SEPA, State Environmental Policy, for Determination of Non-Significance. They had a public comment period, a bunch of people did write in, and then now they're in the appeal period, because the boards have changed, and there's a notice on the website. The concern that I have on stormwater very strongly is, we've been studying stormwater problems in the area along Lewis Thompson since 2009, 2010. There were formal studies done, and pictures done, and ideas, and they were done by Osborne Consulting, who we're still using, and I think they're a very fine consultant. And Inglewood, northeast Inglewood Hill Road, did get a stormwater tight line that was implemented from the parkway, well, short of the parkway, because they changed what they were doing, because the King County was working on the trail, and went all the way up to 211th Avenue. It was a good design. It was successful. They started it in 2012, putting it on the project list, and finished it in 2016. We're trying to do the same thing on Lewis Thompson, and it is supposed to fix drainage problems in our area that have been reported, and looking at the 90% design for SEPA, it's not. Like, it's ignoring, like, where 210th Avenue northeast floods across the road. So, I'm really concerned about, it seems like it's only just taking runoff from the parkway itself and isn't looking at all the drainages that come in from all those houses that were built without stormwater. So, I hope that she'll be able to talk with me, speak with me, listen. This is the time to get it really knocked down at what it's actually doing and make sure the project is done right.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council. Paul Stickney, Samamish. Just a couple of comments. Congratulations to Lita, and I've had the opportunity at several meetings over the last years to meet the clerk's team, Amber, Krista, and, you know, Tenessa, and I think we're in good hands, even though we will miss Lita, and I echo Mary's comments about Melanie Anderson, also great. I was at the open house last night for the town center STC, UZDP, on what I learned to be the new building, and I was surprised there were not a whole lot of people. I, over time, have learned to look at the event calendar myself. I'm not saying anybody else should do that, but that's, it's not as front and center some of these events. I agree with that, and I learned something last night. You know, I was aware that the Roundstones West Project went through a redesign and a new development agreement to move from like a three-story look to a two-story look that basically changed it. And I'll admit, because, you know, if you always tell things like they are, then you never have to worry about what you say to anybody. I thought that this new 300-unit apartment building on two acres was a redo of the prior UZDP that STCA had done on a larger piece, where they held the meetings for that back in 2019. Well, I was wrong on that. In talking to staff and many people at the meeting last night, I came away with an "I" statement conclusion. The prior UZDP that was turned in several years ago is relatively close to approval. The one that the meeting last night was on was on a 300-unit apartment building on two acres, no townhomes. It's in the shape of a rectangle with a center core, open-- core, open space, and that is just getting started. So I don't know the public comment period, but I know it's got a website. But the point is, what they held the meeting for last night is on a totally different tract that is a couple of years behind the other. And when I say tract, that's a play on words I didn't mean to make. Yes, it's on a different track for time, and it's on a different tract. It's nearby. But anyway, I agree that these things would be better served with a broad spectrum of input and really getting the word out, because I think a lot of good comes from input from a lot of different views. Again, congratulations, Lita.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
That's all for public comment tonight. I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Next up, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Yeah, I'd like to pull number six, please.
Okay. So would you like to add it at the end, or do you have a question about it now before you approve?
Yeah, I could add.
Like, you just want, or do you want to just put it in new business?
That'd be great.
Okay. All right. Would anyone like to approve the consent calendar as amended?
Some moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. And then I'm going to amend the agenda again. No surprises this time. But we'd just like to remove the presentation from our King County District Court folks first, so we don't have to go through all the, is that all right?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
You said remove us.
No, sorry. Move you. Yeah. Please leave. Yeah. So I would like to amend the agenda and put item number 13 now, and then we'll do the proclamations and stuff later.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Awesome. All right, we'll get your slides up. And then, I think you're, yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having us. I'm Judge Rebecca Robertson. Oh, wait just a second. I'll still introduce myself. I'm Judge Rebecca Robertson. I'm the chief presiding judge of King County District Court. Thank you so much for your partnership with us, and thank you for having us here today. Just wait a second. Sorry, I thought you were removing us from the count, from the meeting for a second. All right. Just let me know when we're good. So as I'm here, I'll also introduce the folks who are with me. We have Yana Philippidis, who is our operations director, and Judge Marcus Naylor, who is actually your judge here in Samamish. Judge Naylor lives in Samamish. He has for 16 years with his wife and two kids. He's been a judge with King County District Court for four years, and before that, he was a public defender for 30 years with a real focus on criminal defense and diversity and equity practice. He currently sits on the District and Municipal Court Judges Association's Diversity and Education Committee, so he's involved statewide. He's faculty with the Judicial Institute, which is an institute that trains and mentors lawyers of color to be judges, and they just had a presentation a couple of days ago. So this is your judge, Judge Naylor. I thought it would work. Let me try. Turn it off, turn it on. Thank you. Do I just have to move over here, maybe? Oh, there we go. Okay. I can present from over there. I'll talk loud. So I'm Judge Rebecca Robertson. I've been a judge for, this is my 14th year. Thank you so much. And again, thank you for having us today. Next slide, Yana?
You don't have to.
There we go. Okay. So we are your judicial branch of government for Samamish. There are three branches of government, as you know, the judicial, the executive, and the legislative. Often, people actually forget that, even if they're, say, a congressman and think there are only two branches of government. There are actually three, and that goes all the way from the federal level all the way down to Samamish. Next slide. Okay. So the reason we have judicial independence and separate branches of government is to make sure there's a separation from the executive and legislative branches, so that we can render decisions free from any influence of political parties and the executive or the legislature, and based solely on the individual effects as applied to the law. So next slide, please. So this starts with our federal government. As you can see, the president, the Supreme Court, and Congress. And it goes, next slide. And then we have our state, three branches of government, Governor Inslee, our state Supreme Court, and our legislature. There's King County, which we're obviously a part of. That's myself, Judge Robertson K. Tushaw, who is the King County Superior Court Presiding Judge. Next slide. And then there's you, Samamish. There's your three branches of government. So we are very happy to be here with you. There is 25 of King County District Court judges. There's about 18 of us that we could get there for Picture Day. It was not our best day. Some of us are in jeans, others have really weird looks on our face. But we did our best. That might be the one in the picture of us all together in the last 10 years. Next slide. So we are very happy to be providing the court services for the city of Samamish, and we hope to continue our long partnership. Next slide. You are in our East Division in our Issaquah Courthouse. And again, Judge Marcus Naylor is your judge, and Judge Michael Finkel also sits in city of Issaquah, or the, not city of Issaquah, but the Issaquah Courthouse that we have. Next slide. Our mission statement is to provide accessible forum for the fair, efficient, and understandable resolution of criminal and civil cases. We hope to maintain an atmosphere of respect for the dignity of all individuals, and that certainly includes the folks in your jurisdiction. We have 25 judges. We're elected by electoral district, so Judge Naylor is elected out of the Northeast District. I'm from the West District. I sit in Seattle. We have three of these geographic divisions and two courthouses in the West, three in the South, and three in the East. Our Seattle jail calendar is actually considered a separate location, and you probably don't want to visit us there. We have also a courthouse in Vashon. About once a month, we have our judges and staff take a ferry over to Vashon and sit in their city council and do court for Vashon. Next slide, please. We have 13 contracting cities, of which you are one. So we are, have all these other cities, and they're in various courthouses. Next slide. The matters that we handle are vast. King County District Court handles all gross misdemeanor and misdemeanor criminal cases from both all of our contracting cities and all unincorporated areas of King County. We also handle all of the felony first appearance hearings. So if someone's booked on a murder charge, one of our judges handles that in downtown Seattle, and all of the, it was called felony expedited cases, where they're bumped down to a misdemeanor if they do certain things. We handle all protection orders, anti-harassment, stalking, domestic violence, et cetera, et cetera. We handle all civil litigation under $100,000 in the entire county. We also do all of the small claims in the county, the name changes. We do search warrants. We have a rotation. We're on search warrant duty all night long. Luckily, that was not me last night, so I'm happy for you guys tonight. We do all the infractions, so all your city infractions and all the other civil matters, including garnishments, foreclosures, animal impound, tow hearings, et cetera. We also have judge-supervised probation. So the difference between, say, a district court and superior court is we actually can put people on probation, and the people come back before the court, and we discuss with them whether they're compliant with our probation, et cetera, instead of just sending them off to the Department of Corrections. We have several therapeutic courts. We have Regional Mental Health Court, Regional Veterans Court, and three separate community courts in Auburn, Redmond, and Shoreline, which is a therapeutic court model where it's, which is really designed to get to the root of someone's criminal behavior, and usually it's mental health, chemical dependency, and housing issues. And they usually come in once a week and are hand-walked over to services and are really given intensive supervision so that they can succeed. And that has been pretty successful in reducing recidivism. Could we go back one? Sorry about that. Oh, sorry, go forward. So most of our judicial time is actually spent on criminal cases. You'll see a graph, and it'll show so much parking. That's actually not where most of our time is spent. We spend most of it on our criminal cases, which include all the way through arraignment, pre-trial, the substantive motions, going through trial, and then all of our probation and reviews. We usually have several trials going throughout the day all over King County. Next slide, please. So they are more serious than our civil cases by definition. People could go to jail. They could go to jail for years on the cases they have before us in King County District Court. So everybody's liberty interests are affected, and we have to respect and enforce their constitutional rights, including their right to be free from unlawful seizures, against self-incrimination, the right to counsel, their jury trial, et cetera. So we really are digging deep into the law on a lot of these cases. Next slide, please. Our judicial time out of court is, again, doing the search warrants, which were available for 24/7. City of Samamish can call King County District Court, and we do the weekend and holiday coverage, because we can't hold someone in jail for longer than 48 hours, so we cover that for the entire county. We do legal research and various ex parte motions, et cetera, as well as court administration and statewide involvement. I, myself, sit on the board for judicial administration for the entire state, as well as the District and Municipal Court Judges Association Board, so that we can have our voice heard statewide. Next slide, please. So our goals here in District Court is to stop criminal behavior. I was speaking to a Superior Court judge recently who had been at our level, and I asked if she missed us, and she said what she missed was the hope that you had in District and Municipal Court, in our level of court, because you really had the opportunity to catch people before they graduated to felonies, before they fell too far down the hole. And that's what we, is our goal each time. So we have the tools of punishment, fines, work crew, et cetera, but we're often focusing on rehabilitation. We have alcohol, drug, mental health, sexual deviancy, as well as other educational classes. As I'm sure you know, there's a huge fentanyl crisis that's happening in the county that has changed things 180 degrees from when I started. It is something like we've never seen before. Usually, when I was doing the first appearance calendars downtown, I'd say about 75% of the people were mentally ill, chemically addicted, usually fentanyl. And so it's a real crisis. Next slide, please. So our funding comes from the King County General Fund, as well as the contracts with you guys, and then the King County mid-behavioral sales tax, as well as the levies for veterans and human services, et cetera. So any of your cases and your citizens who are charged in Samamish can actually go to Veterans Court, to Mental Health Court, to one of our therapeutic courts, and we, King County, actually takes folks from other jurisdictions as well, from the municipalities, into our mental health courts, so we can provide those services to everyone. So as you can see, these are our caseloads, and you can see parking and infraction are a huge piece of the pie in terms of the numbers, but the smaller little portions of the pie is where we spend most of our time and our energy and our money going through that. Next slide, please. So you can see there was a huge drop during the pandemic, and that's starting to rise again. Prosecutors' offices weren't charging people, police weren't arresting people, jails were begging us to keep folks out of jail during the pandemic, and they still are, because it's still kind of critical conditions inside of our jails. But filings are starting to go up to kind of pre-COVID levels, as we like to call it. Next slide, please. And here's Samamish cases. So you had a little over 1,600 cases in 2023. Most of them, of course, were infractions, but you had many criminal cases, as well as some parking, not as many parking cases, but a lot of traffic infractions. So all of these cases were heard through Issaquah or Issaquah District Court by Judge Naylor. Next matter. So Samamish followed the same trend as the rest of King County in terms of a big drop during COVID, and it's slowly going back up. So King County District Court also engages in community and wants to really involve the community and be role models for the community. So we've been going into various community celebrations and festivals so that we can tell people what the District Court judges do, so we can show our diverse judges, and provide a real name to the face and understanding of what King County District Court does. We actually have 25 judges. Nine of them are of color, and that mirrors the population of King County. So we do have the judicial leadership, and I'm the chief presiding judge. We have an assistant three-division presiding judges that we vote on. And thank you again for your partnership with King County District Court. I am, and Judge Naylor are happy to answer any questions that you might have about court services.
Deputy Mayor Howe.
Thank you for the informative presentation. It's very helpful. I don't think I've ever seen this before, so it really does lay a nice foundation. A couple of quick questions. I was curious, when you were talking about caseloads, if the shortage of public defenders has impacted your team at all, or not so much?
Oh, it's absolutely affecting us on all levels. Cases are taking longer to resolve because there just aren't as many attorneys to resolve the cases quickly, so we're having cases stack up. It is more difficult for us to find attorneys to assign to cases. How that's impacting King County mostly is in our ability to sign conflict counsel if the regular public defender has not, cannot handle a case. And so we're trying to get the cities all together to kind of help us resolve this issue. But it's, it's at a crisis level already. I've offered many times to go down and testify in Olympia that we need more funding for public defenders, and it is definitely affecting everything that we do.
Well, I wondered. And so thank you for that. And the other question I had had to do with your statistics about, so I mentioned specific, where you were showing like a slight increase post-COVID. So do you break that out into demographic data so that I could understand age groups and so forth?
I think we probably may be able to get that information. I will, I'll talk to Yana about that.
Because I'm trying, but the question, what it goes to is, what happened before COVID? What happens after COVID? Where are we seeing a trend? It isn't very long, so it's really hard to be predictive with that amount of data, because it's probably not enough data. But I'm trying to get an understanding of this matches other things from a societal nature that we can see, you know, just as we're out in the world.
I can certainly see if we can get that data on the demographics, what kind of cases. I think that post-COVID, what has been big is cities filing drug possession charges, because that's now been authorized. Cities can, you know, make a law against that. So some cities, probably not Samamish, but some cities are having a lot bigger struggle, and they are filing those cases. The homeless population is booming, and that's, you know, having some unfortunate effects. But anecdotally, I feel like it's mostly the same kind of crimes that we saw being charged before that were not being charged because of the pandemic. So the lower-level crimes that were not violent, there was less desire to file those and risk someone going into jail or crowded courtrooms when they were property crimes. And now that things have changed, those are being filed again.
I'm sorry, I have one more, just an add-on question, I guess. It's, I love the idea of the treatment courts, things of that nature, because that's the correct channel. Do we get data on outcome?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And I can provide that to you. I didn't have that in my slide. But we do have data on recidivism for all of our community courts and our mental health courts, and I'm happy to email that to you tomorrow.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Yeah. It does, it, the thing about therapeutic courts is wonderful, and it has better outcomes for recidivism. It is also extremely time and money intensive.
It's very expensive.
Yeah, it's very expensive.
I know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council? So I want to say thank you. I always hear that domestic violence is like the high I always hear that domestic violence is like the highest thing in Samamish as far as percentages. I don't know where that came from. I don't know if that's true. But I would love, you know, like where are we at or for types of, you know, crime?
Well, from what I saw, it's about even with DUIs in Samamish. But domestic violence is usually a third to a half of the cases that we're filing in misdemeanor court because they're so serious. So, those are not the cases that are not going to be not filed. But it's a very serious issue. And so, I can certainly get you the statistics of how many domestic violence cases were filed in 2023 for Samamish. But that would track with other cities.
Yeah, no problem. I just always, I don't know why that comes up as like a statistic for Samamish. I never knew if it was true or not, so.
It's not only Samamish.
Yeah, fair, fair, yeah. Well, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
I'm taking my MPRE next week, so I'll be channeling you both, so.
Good luck.
Yeah. Do not want to do criminal law, but thank you for what you all do.
Oh, thank you very much. Don't ever say never.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you all so much.
Yeah, thank you. All righty. So, next up, we have a pro, oh, we're clapping, sorry. All right, next up, we have our proclamation for World Down Syndrome Day. Deputy Mayor Howe.
March 21, 2024. Whereas we recognize World Down Syndrome Day, a day dedicated to raising the awareness about Down Syndrome and advocating for the rights, inclusion, and well-being of individuals with Down Syndrome. And whereas Down Syndrome is a naturally occurring chromosomal arrangement that has always been part of the human condition, exists in all regions across the globe, and commonly results in variable effects on learning styles, physical characteristics, health. And whereas individuals with Down Syndrome are an integral part of our communities, contributing their unique perspectives, talents, and abilities to enrich our society. And whereas we acknowledge the importance of fostering an inclusive society that embraces and celebrates the value and dignity of every individual, regardless of their abilities or disabilities. And whereas we honor the resilience, strength, and achievements of those with Down Syndrome, as well as their families, caregivers, and advocates who work to ensure that they have access to opportunities, support, resources to thrive. And whereas through education, advocacy, and empowerment, we can challenge stereotypes and promote a more inclusive world where all individuals are valued, respected, and given the opportunity to reach their full potential. Whereas to theme the message for World Down Syndrome Day 2024 is a call for people around the world to end the stereotypes. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that Mayor Kaylee Clark, on behalf of the Samamish City Council, do hereby proclaim March 2021, 2024 as World Down Syndrome Day in the city of Samamish. And as a personal note, there's a wonderful ad that I saw from Rashine on LinkedIn that talks about if you expect certain things or behaviors out of people, that's what you'll get. So, look for the unexpected, believe in what's possible, and assume that everybody can be everything that they want to be.
Great, thank you. Next up, World Autism Day, Councilmember O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for saying that. And I also would like to encourage all of you out there watching this at another time or present in the room, encourage all of you to let a little neurodiversity into your life. It will enrich your life beyond measure, let me tell you. Thank you. World Autism Awareness Day, April 2, 2024. Whereas autism is a developmental disorder that affects 1 in 36 children in the United States, characterized by differences in social communication, interaction, and behavior. And we acknowledge the importance of promoting early diagnosis, intervention, and support services to enhance the quality of life and opportunities of individuals with autism, as well as their families. And whereas we celebrate the unique strengths, talents, and contributions of those with autism in our communities, workplaces, and society as a whole. And whereas we recognize the challenges that people with autism face and recognize the unique strengths and perspectives they bring to our lives and welcome their full contribution and participation in our schools, workplaces, public facilities. And whereas when people with autism are accepted, supported, included, our community is a richer place. And whereas through education and advocacy, we can create a more inclusive and supportive environment that respects the dignity, rights, and diversity of all people, regardless of their neurodevelopmental differences. And whereas on this day, we recognize World Autism Awareness Day, established by the United Nations, and dedicate this day to increasing understanding, acceptance, and inclusion of people with autism spectrum disorder. And whereas this year's theme of World Autism Awareness Day will focus on stories of empowerment, challenges faced, and victories achieved. Now, therefore, it is resolved that Mayor Kaylee Clark, on behalf of Samamish City Council, do hereby proclaim April 2, 2024 as World Autism Awareness Day in the city of Samamish, and urge all to participate in raising awareness about autism, promoting acceptance and understanding and supporting initiatives that improve the lives of those with autism and their families. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, next up, we have our potential conclusion of our public hearing for the transit plan. And I think we might have had some people sign in for comment before we close up the hearing. Hello, Audrey. We do have a couple in-person public hearing comments. If you want us to start with there, if you have any words first.
That's great. I was just going to say that we are very excited to be presenting the final transit plan for the city. This is a very important milestone for the city of Samamish. So, very excited that we have the opportunity to receive more public comment as well today. We do have a short presentation that we can either do ahead of the comment period or after, either way. And then, at the end of the presentation, we do have a recommended motion for council to consider as we hopefully move forward with adopting the plan this evening. For the record, Audrey Starsee, I'm the Director of Public Works, and I am joined this evening by Greg Samatio, our Deputy Director of Public Works, as well as Lindsay Channing, our Transportation Planner. So, happy to present first, or we can jump into the public comment either.
Counsel, are you good with the presentation first? Or do you want to do public comment? On the presentation? Okay, Audrey, go ahead. Presentation first.
Thank you. Whenever you're ready.
I will get that pulled up. All right, hopefully, everyone can see my screen. As our Director Audrey Starsee stated, this is our Transit Plan City Council Public Hearing continuation from March 5. Very brief presentation this evening. I just wanted to give a quick recap of where we're at with the transit plan, a recap at a very high level of questions received to date, and then allow you all to continue the public hearing and potentially close it this evening, and then to consider adoption of the transit plan if the public hearing is concluded. So, for status, as I mentioned, staff did give a presentation on the draft transit plan at the March 5 council meeting. We had two members of the public speak during the public hearing. And then, there were several questions from council members that evening. The public hearing was continued to this evening. And we did, we're accepting written comments until 5:00 p.m. today on regards to the transit plan. Then, of course, any verbal comments this evening. Staff compiled and published a transit plan Q and A document. It is available on our project webpage, as well as attached to the agenda bill for this item this evening. So, what has been included in that transit plan Q and A document are all questions that we received leading up to, during, and after the public hearing. We did not receive any questions after the public hearing. And when this document was published was 2:30 yesterday. So, that is the extent of this document. I checked with our city clerk's office this evening. And as of 5:00 p.m. today, we also had not received any further written questions or comments in regards to the transit plan. But overall, the questions were around some route clarifications. We had questions around the potential commuter shuttle that the city could facilitate, other projects that we have. So, they were great questions, and hopefully, our answers, which we tried to summarize from what we verbally presented on the 5th, were clear and concise for everyone to understand in this document. I did also want to mention, as we were going through the document and responding to questions, we did notice a Scrivener error in Table 1 of the Equity Analysis Memo in regards to jobs and jobs for the low and moderate income levels for our city. And so, we are recommending that council allow us to correct Table 1 in the Equity Analysis Memo attachment, which is Appendix B, and Table 3 in the existing conditions, that same section, the jobs and the jobs for low to moderate income level table in Appendix A as part of the motion this evening. The outcome that we're anticipating for the transit plan is that it will help to guide the city in improving transit for the city and our community. It will be incorporated into the transportation element as appropriate as we're updating our comprehensive plan this year. We will also be incorporating it into the Transportation Master Plan and the Transportation Improvement Plan. The incorporation into the Transportation Improvement Plan, of course, would be those six-year projects. It will also be reviewed and updated every five years. So, with that, council, I would suggest that you move to the public hearing, take any comments, and close if you should choose. And then, at the conclusion, I'm happy to pull up this slide if you would like our suggested motion, which is to move to adopt the transit plan via resolution as staff has presented this evening. With that, that concludes my presentation. I ask if you have any questions.
Great, thank you, Lindsay. And thank you for such a short motion. That was so nice.
Lived here since 2010. I'm concerned about the order of the work being done because we haven't even finished the comprehensive plan update land use element. And we're yet already digging our heels in about what we're going to do for transit. It just seems backwards to me. I think the transit plans ought to be designed in order to serve the land use that's determined by the city. And now, are we going to determine the land use based on the transit plan? Or we've got a chicken and egg thing going, and it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to not start with a comprehensive plan update that incorporates land use changes. The other thing, I brought this up before, but there's no service at all on East Lake-Samamish Parkway. And it seems frightening to me to put all of our transit eggs in 228th with one exit at the north and one exit at the south. We're already gridlocked on that road at times. And so, I just feel like that's setting us up for a huge travel failure, especially with the Redmond Light Rail Station being there. You're going to have a flood of people coming down off the hill on Inglewood and Thompson Road to the Parkway to go north to the transit center. And I feel like we are really going to have a problem with roads that are not designed to handle it and aren't even on the master plan for improvement. So, I do feel like this is premature. I don't know what the big rush is. I think it would make sense to do the whole project together with the land use, the transportation master plan, and the transit plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, right before I got here, I was James Eastman, East Lake-Samamish Parkway. Before I got here, I was out on the trail riding my bike. Probably hundreds of people out there today. It was amazing. You probably tell by my chiseled physique and my tight shorts that I love to ride bikes. You probably guessed that I probably didn't start riding bikes till about 2019, once e-bikes became prevalent. And I have a motor to take me everywhere. I don't want to pedal or to get back up these steep hills. But I've pretty much probably ridden every single rails-to-trail conversion here in the state of Washington. And my favorite ride is probably to West Seattle and meeting my wife in the car because my battery's discharged by then and then driving back here. But I'll stop at U-Dub on the way and Gasworks and go to the Locks. And then, all the way across the waterfront over the small West Seattle Bridge, down Alkai Beach, and finish there. And really, the only road I ever ride on is that small section of the Burt Gilman there in Ballard where you are forced to get off. So, it's amazing, amazing amenity having that trail there. I also ride my bike to the Bear Creek Park and Ride, and I'll put it in a bike locker. And then, I'll just get on the bus and take it to Light Rail in Seattle and go to the airport. As soon as that light rail's open there, I'm riding my bike on the trail, putting it in a bike locker, and I'm going to go to the airport that way. And then, pretty much anywhere and everywhere in between that light rail goes. I mean, that's an amazing amenity. But it's almost open. And when I cross the Parkway, there's never a safe spot to get up the plateau. There's a secret way that nobody knows about. But right across from Marymore Storage, there's the Bond Apartments. And you need to crosswalk to get across, which we need to coordinate with Redmond on getting. And then, you ride on the sidewalk there in front of the Bond. And then, there's this little tiny trail that starts to gradually work its way up. It kind of shows it on that topo map. But it's through Redmond, and it's through these neighborhoods. And then, you go and you cross the Samamish border on the 190th, and you kind of gradually work your way up to the thumb where my property is, which is good for me because I'm done. I don't have to pedal, and I'm able to do it. But if you want to keep going up to Samamish, the hills are too steep. Ideal grade, I think, for e-bike is about 20, or excuse me, 10% max. I will ride an extra three or four miles if it means that I don't have to get off my bike. Like, I hate getting off my bike. So, I will go much further to just keep riding on my bike and go up a nice gradual slope. So, getting to Light Rail is a big deal. I support the transit plan, but I support all the stuff that we need to be coordinating with Redmond now. I mean, Debbie mentioned East Lake-Samamish Parkway. About seven years ago, I gave a presentation. You can probably go pull it up. That if you leave Town Center and go to that transit station, going the Parkway route, you could go through.
We are overtime.
Three signals versus 11 on Sahali Way. So, there's some considerations to be made. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone else not get an opportunity to sign up? Do we have anyone online?
For the new reasonable accommodation, those who have pre-registered by 3 o'clock today, please raise your hand if you wish to give testimony.
Good evening. This is Mary Wichter. Been in Samamish since 2000, right after it incorporated. First of all, I wanted to say I think the consultants, I think the staff, I think the plan, really overall, is very good. I believe it is open to the fact that we have the future of land use, but it's not settled in Town Center. And it will probably change, needs to change, and really should change. So, I would suggest that, I know you're talking about a five-year revisit, but I think maybe first quarter of 2025, if budget can be put in this fall, so it could be on the work plan next year. That way, you can review it when there's more settled in land use. The comprehensive plan is already starting. Things are going to need to happen. And I had talked before about the transit plan being very. And I had talked before about the transit plan being very 228-centric, which it needs to be because that's where the density in the schools and the shopping and the businesses are. But we also do need to have the east-west connection trails. And at the retreat, I spoke on connectivity. At the recent parks meeting, I spoke on connectivity. And at this prior public hearing on March 5th, I also spoke on connectivity. And I know some council members heard me because they actually used my words. But just like James's talk, James Eastman, who just spoke, he was talking about the secret trail over by Marymore Storage and how you get up there. We need to have more of those that connect around and can get people places, whether they're walking, biking, hiking, walking their dogs, or connecting any other way. Also, if there's some way that shuttles could run up and down, like Inglewood Hill Road or Lewis Thompson Road, that could connect people as well. So in general, I think the transit plan is something very, very worthwhile. I just think it's really related to the land use. The land use is going to be changing. So I think it needs another look before the five years it passes. I do know that we need to have a transportation element in the comprehensive plan. And I know that there's the transportation master plan is too. So those all things will run together and roll together. But if we can get the density up where it makes the transit work, you'll have more density of housing, you'll have less climate impacts, you can have more connectivity for people to actually walk and not rely on the cars so much. You'll save more trees because you won't be developing on the shoulders and on the critical areas where the trees are getting taken down, up to 45, 50 trees for one single-family household. We've been losing those for years. I also do want to thank James Eastman for speaking earlier on transfer development rights. I think those are a big thing. And if we can get that, that will help transit even more. So I'll yield the rest of my time today, but thank you for the work. I hope that you will adopt it, but have kind of a second glance at it first quarter of 2025 and make sure you have the budget staff. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think the thumbs up was we're all good. Okay, awesome. Okay, thank you, everybody. All right, council, I'll open it up to you either for questions or motion. Maybe you can put that back up there, Lindsay, just in case.
Mayor, did you close the public hearing?
Oh, yeah. I always forget that part. All right, this public hearing for our transit plan is now closed. All right, Councilmember Trine.
Yeah, so first question, thank you, Mayor. First question for staff is, the $200,000 that we budgeted for the transportation or the transit plan, has that money been spent? Did we spend the $200,000, and this is the result of that? Is this the outcome?
Councilmember Trine, yes, this is the transit plan. I'm sure the staff can be more specific about, a lot of that was for the data and analysis by the consultants that we brought on board to do the work. And this is the result, bearing in mind that this is in concert with, this will be part of the work that we're doing on the transportation master plan and the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. So they're all linked up.
Backwards, in my opinion. So, yeah, it's really hard for me to be supporting something that is going to change in a year. And so, yeah, we can keep the data and the information that we gathered from it, but it was something that I didn't agree with whenever we started the whole idea of spending taxpayers' money to do something ahead of a comprehensive plan update that then is going to turn into a transportation master plan, which would then include transit citywide. So anything that we do here is just something that we paid for now, and that's going to change. So that's where I stand. I won't be supporting this motion or any motion that would be to move forward with this transit plan. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I just want to thank the staff. And I know Councilmember Gupta served on committee to help inform this. So just since we've heard the concerns, as I understand it, right, we have this transit plan. We're working on the transportation element as part of that comprehensive plan update. So I guess my question, and I think I know the answer, but my question would be, as we work on the comprehensive plan update, if you found something where some land use assumptions that you may have made change as part of that comprehensive plan update, or there's something you discover as you're working on that transportation element, I'm assuming that you would come forward with recommended potential updates to this transit plan as part of that, right? If some assumptions that you made here changed based on that work. Is that correct?
That's correct. Just also, one more thing to point out is, as City Manager was discussing briefly, but the transit plan really provides a really great foundation for the city, for some of our transit policies. So those are incorporated into our draft transportation element. And many of the project lists will be added to the tip as well as the transportation master plan. All of those plans are meant to be adaptive. So as the city evolves over time, we are constantly looking and reviewing and updating these plans so that we are always in sync with what's happening with land use changes.
Excellent, thank you. And then my only other question, which is really along the same lines, is as things like the Marymore Park Light Rail Station opens and we start to see some potential concentration, we can, again, also adapt if we, you know, find that we want to have a circulator route, right? I know that that's, an intracity circulator route is on the long-term plan. But if we find that we do have a lot more people from Samamish using the light rail than maybe anticipated, we could look at, and again, it would be up to the council's discretion to say, hey, we need to look at getting a circulator route that takes people down to the light rails. That, I mean, we could do that at any time if we felt that the need and the demand arose. Is that correct? And again, we have opportunities every year with the tip to do stuff like that. I mean, I know the tip is really, well, no, the tip is not just the capital plans, right? We can include things like a circulator route or at least the capital improvements to support something like that every year, right?
The tip focuses on capital improvements. So what we will likely see in this year's tip is consideration for items such as a transit enhancement program or a bus stop amenity enhancement program, right? That really takes into account that there's things that the city can do to enhance transit within Samamish as well as the region, things like improving our bus stops and how we prioritize those improvements to our bus stops should we so choose to. Again, that's up to council to decide as we present the tip. Those longer-term projects will reside in the TMP and of course, can be evaluated further as we go forward, too.
Excellent. And then I would support James Eastman's recommendation of doing a little outreach with Redmond. That north end of the East Lake Samamish Parkway, I do think that some additional crosswalks in that area would be great. So if there's anything that we as elected officials can help with, we don't want to get in the way, but if that's something you need us to help with in coordinating with them, I do think that would be a great idea. I think that whole section there, where I think there will be a lot more pedestrian and sort of multimodal traffic, it will affect our residents as well as the Redmond ones. So, and I happen to know that there is some work going on around that right now. So it might be a great time to reach out and connect with them. Is it premature? Okay, I will wait.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you for all your hard work on this plan. I very much support this plan. I think it's about time that we have it. I understand there's concerns as whether or not it's premature. I would disagree. We could keep on waiting. We've been talking about this plan for two years. And when we discuss various plans, the Climate Action Plan, the Housing Diversification Toolkit, invariably, transit always comes up. And for me, starting sooner rather than later, I think, is a huge advantage. And so I understand we can update, you know, as we move along and we have, and we learn more, and other cities, you know, their transportation or their, whatever they're doing in their cities impact us. We can adapt. But I do very much support this plan. So thank you for your hard work on this.
Deputy Mayor Howe?
Thank you. You know, I was just wondering, you know how you're in better position to get grants if you're shovel-ready? I wondered if having a transit plan made us more shovel-ready for, say, Metro or Sound Transit. I wondered if the fact that we have this thing, if that helps encourage them or it gives them a belief that we're serious about transit? Or is that just something that really just helps us more than any? I realize it helps us more than anything else, but I also see it as a kind of a template that we can use in my discussions with RTC or the Eastside Transportation Partnership or in conversations with Metro or with Sound, is that you have a document you can kind of throw down saying, hey, this is actually a plan that is adjustable and lives and breathes and is dynamic. I'm assuming it kind of helps us with those conversations, but perhaps that's in error.
You are very much correct, and I'll let the team jump in here. But, you know, this plan is twofold. So it is obviously a roadmap, if you will, for transit improvements that the city could consider. But it is very much that document that sets the foundation for transit within Samamish and the region. It helps us with those conversations with our agency partners in other cities, saying how important transit is to the Samamish community. Greg, Lindsay, if you have anything to add?
I would characterize similar, as I said last time, with this service that Metro is going to be providing. This is exceptional. And it's an opportunity for us with this transit plan to partner with them and show them that we are serious about creating better amenities to provide better service so that transit works within Samamish, getting our citizens to the light rail stations and providing that service and connectivity. So there's no negative to having it. And as you mentioned, the partnerships with Sound Transit and Metro, having this provides us just that better level of coordination and opportunities for good dialogue.
Great, well, thank you. I also think that we kind of have to have it to go with the affordable housing because if you don't, they have to go together. Affordable housing, transit, both of the plans have to travel together. So having one without the other, just it collapses. So thank you for your work on this, and I will be supporting it.
Councilmember Gupta?
Thank you, staff, for all your hard work on this. I did get the chance to serve on the Community Advisory Committee for the transit plans. I'm very excited to see this coming forward. I think some things I wanted to highlight with the potential route of the circulator shuttle, I do think connections down to East Lake Parkway and the East Lake Samamish Trail, that, you know, we've been looking for ways as a community to get people safely down the hill. So just providing another way where you can load up your bike, get down to the trail and make use of that amenity, connect to Redmond Light Rail, I think, will be valuable. I know that's several years in the future, but that's something I want to keep our eye on. And I do think it makes sense because the two-line for light rail is opening, I think, April 27th, which happens to be my birthday, so very exciting. And, you know, with the opening of the full line next year, we are getting better service on the 269 route next year. So I think it makes sense to have the plan in place so we can understand what the challenges are and how we, as a city, can incentivize and encourage people to take transit, make sure that it's safe for them, make sure that it's accessible. I think this is an opportunity that we should be taking advantage of. And thank you all for your work. And if I could, I would like to move that we-
Oh, yeah. Do we have any other comments?
I was going to make the motion. It's fine, go for it, Sid.
I move that we adopt the transit plan as presented today.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any other comments or discussion?
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion.
Okay, just, do I do amendments first or comments first?
It's fine.
Because I have a light up over here.
You can do that first.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so the amendment would just be a simple one, is that the review of it would be in three years instead of five.
I was going to ask if that is something that is possible or is it continuous? I think you said you do look at it yearly or probably more than that.
I anticipate that we would be looking at it frequently. This is a foundation for many of our projects and programs. We can certainly look at a formal review more often, but I think it's industry standard about every five, six years, if I'm correct. Is that right, Lindsay? Thank you.
Yeah, the proposal is for at least every five years. Doesn't prohibit us from looking at it sooner.
All right, would anyone like to second Councilmember Trine's motion or amendment?
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye. Or, sorry, what was that?
Aye.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, what was that?
Well, I just, since the wording currently is at least every five years, which gives us the opportunity to do it more frequently, if we say three, we actually kind of lock ourselves into three as opposed to giving ourselves the discretion to say, we're going to do it between now and five years as often as needed. And so I don't think the amendment is necessary. It might actually paint us into a corner we didn't intend to. Thanks.
All right, so Councilmember Trine, would you like to speak to that before we vote?
No, thank you.
All right, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
If Councilmember Fairman made the second, does she have to vote in affirmative? Thank you. All right. Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay, so by 6-1, that amendment does not pass. I think, sorry, did you still have a comment, Councilmember Stewart?
I did, I'm sorry, but I do.
Go ahead.
And it's just kind of jokingly. I don't mean to call out Councilmember Lamb, but we've been talking about this transit plan far more than two years. So I'm just super excited that this has finally come into fruition. So I just wanted to thank the staff, the consultants, and all of the community members one more time. Thank you.
Councilmember Gupta?
Sorry, that was on from last time.
Did you already make the motion? I'm sorry, yes, you did.
Yes.
Yeah, I can't even. Okay, all those in favor to, whatever the motion is, to approve the transit plan as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
All right, so by 6-1, Resolution 2024-1047 passes. Thank you, Audrey, Lindsay, and Greg for being here and for all your hard work on this. Really excited to see, you know, what is next. So thank you all.
Thank you very much, council. We're very excited, so thank you.
All right, so new business, we'll start with the East Samamish Park baseball field, and then we'll move to item number six. So thankfully, we have, I think Anjali will be queued up for both. So we have our Consultant Services Contract Award. And I think I know for sure we have Anjali and Kevin here, is there? Oh, go ahead. Yeah.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager. I'm Anjali Meyer, Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities. We have for your consideration tonight a contract with DA Hogan for the improvements to the baseball fields at East Samamish Park. I'm going to actually turn this over to Kevin Teague, our Deputy Director, to introduce the team and the topic.
Thank you, Anjali, and good evening, Madam Mayor and council, Mr. City Manager. For the record, my name is Kevin Teague, and I'm the Deputy Director for Parks Recreation and Facilities. Tonight, we are bringing a design contract to you for a project that is recommended as part of our athletic field study. This athletic field study was done in 2020 or completed in 2020. And it is for the renovation of the baseball fields at East Samamish Park. Our project manager for this project is Shelby Peralta, who I know you are all very familiar with after her recent completion of the Pro's Plan and the master plans for Big Rock South and Beaton Hill Park. And she will be our project manager on this. And our consultant for this project was selected through a competitive request for qualification process. And the consultant is DA Hogan. And our project management manager from DA Hogan is Dave Anderson. He's one of the principals there, and he is with us tonight, very knowledgeable on all things athletic fields. So with that, I will turn it over to Shelby, who's online, and then we'll come back to you for questions at the end. Thanks.
Good evening, council, and thank you, Kevin, for the introduction, a roadmap for tonight's presentation. I will introduce the park and background information, give an overview of the project scope, and conclude with timeline and open up for questions. So we are here tonight to introduce the ballfield improvement project and are seeking approval from City Council to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with DA- DA Hogan for planning, design, and construction administration services for baseball field improvements at East Sammamish Park. So starting off with background information, East Sammamish Park was originally built in the early 90s before being transferred to the city from King County. The master plan for the park was adopted in 2008, and following adoption, minor upgrades and safety repairs have been completed, such as installing foul ball netting to the ball fields in 2014 and 2019, in addition to resurfacing the tennis courts with a pickleball overlay in 2022. To help orient everyone, East Sammamish Park is outlined in red and is located on Northeast 16th Street, adjacent to Margaret Mead Elementary. As you can see in this image, this park and its athletic fields are in close proximity to a few of our other city-managed athletic facilities like Inglewood and Eastlake Community This 19-acre park includes a number of athletic facilities. We have two natural grass ball fields, one multipurpose field, and a sports court with striping for both tennis and pickleball. Additional amenities include a play area, picnic shelter, restrooms, and parking lot. So now that I've oriented you to East Sammamish Park, I'll next move to an overview of the project. But before getting started on that, in 2020, a citywide athletic field study was completed. Now, the intent of this study was to provide recommendations for sports field improvements to resolve deficiencies and add capacity while emphasizing cost-saving measures. In looking at opportunities for upgrading facilities, East Sammamish Park was among the four priority projects that were identified. Recommendations from this study included converting the multipurpose grass fields to synthetic turf with lights, converting the infills for the two baseball fields to synthetic turf. And the synthetic turf would really improve reliability, allow for fewer rainouts, and overall require less maintenance. And then lights on the multipurpose field would increase capacity. So taking that information, you know, although the athletic field study identified opportunities for improvements to all the athletic facilities at East Sammamish Park, the scope of this project focuses on the ball fields. So work under this project would include converting the two sand-in fields to synthetic turf with an alternative infill such as cork, like what is being installed at Inglewood Middle School, a supplemental pad, dugout roof replacement, irrigation modifications, accessibility improvements, and spectator enhancements. Prior to executing a contract with DA Hogan, the consultant completed an initial site assessment to develop their scope of work for this project. And as part of this effort, additional site elements were recommended to be addressed as part of the overall project. So this includes resurfacing the warning track and outfield, fencing improvements for the outfield, renovating the backstop and ball control netting, and converting the batting cages to synthetic turf. Now, these additional elements will be further evaluated as part of the planning and design process to determine whether they should be included as additive alternates during the bidding phase, as they would likely require additional budget to complete. And just something to note is there will be an opportunity for City Council to review these additive alternates and award or reject any or all of these alternates prior to a construction contract. So for timeline, we are in the very beginning stages of the project. Once we have a contract in place, design permitting and construction documents will take us through to early spring of 2025, with bidding in late spring, early summer, and construction anticipated in late summer 2025. And this is to hold until the Little League season is completed and middle school field improvements at Inglewood are complete to minimize any disturbance for field scheduling. So circling back to the purpose of tonight's presentation, we are seeking approval from Council to authorize the City Manager to execute a contract with DA Hogan for the planning, design, and construction administration services for baseball field improvements at East Sammamish Park. I'm sorry, that's a little bit longer of a motion, but I want to thank you for your time and open up for questions.
Great, thank you, Shelby. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, so this is just for the baseball fields, not the multipurpose field?
Yes, that's correct.
Interesting. And it just struck me as I was thinking about it, do we have any data on as climate, how has climate change affected or is it affecting the number of rainouts? And I only say that because these two fields here are two of the best baseball fields in the city. Those infills, first of all, hats off to your staff because they're very well-maintained. And so I'm just wondering, like, I know that that multipurpose field there is often too wet to play on and often not overly usable for much of anything but soccer practice. So I'm just curious sort of why the baseball field's first as opposed to the multipurpose field, and is it necessary still with climate change and potentially less rain in the springs to do the replacement for these infills? Thanks.
I can start with the response to that and then look to Shelby and Dave for further. I know that we identified the baseball fields ahead of the multipurpose field for the reason that it is, it's providing, there's an efficiency of getting the two ball fields, and there's a way of doing that by replacing the sand infill with synthetic infill and leaving the outfields as natural grass that is, with the economy of scale, we're able to get better playability, more opportunities there rather than one isolated multipurpose field. The other part of the athletic field study recommendation for the multipurpose field was including lights. And really, for that that field, by adding, converting it to synthetic turf, to add lights would require that we reopen the master plan for East Sammamish Park, and that would be a much longer process. Whereas the baseball fields with a renovation, we can accomplish, we can make a significant impact on the number of usable hours on the field. As to your question about climate change, I don't think we have data yet at this point.
Got it.
But one really key point with the synthetic infills is that you've reduced, you've eliminated that that infield prep time, which I'm sure you recall of dragging the fields and all of that sort of thing that not only takes staff time but also costs. We backcharge the renters of the fields for that for that that use as well.
Okay.
Shelby, do you or Dave, either of you want to add anything to that?
I would say, given the nature of infield mix, it needs to be stable when it's dry, so it typically is not free draining. And going to converting those infield mix surfaces to permeable material really provides significant improvement in reliability of scheduling for the field, because even when you're having rainfall or right after rainfall, the infield's still playable.
All right. And I would be a proponent of having improvements to the viewing, like the bleachers, having some sort of cover there because in the summer, or whatever the plan is, because in the summer, when the sun is out, I mean, it is unbearable. So I think that would definitely be something that we should consider from a from a usability perspective. So thank you.
Councilmember Lamb?
I just had a clarifying question. So when the multipurpose field is revisited, would that go back out to RFQ again?
Yes, yes, it would.
Okay. And what is the anticipated timeline? I mean, it's further out? Would it be like the year after?
I think it would be further out than that. I don't know. Do you, Anjali?
So we shared that slide because that was the outcome of the athletic field study, which looked at all the athletic fields that the city owns and basically came up with recommendations. But after that study was done, we only looked at what is the high priority, the best return on investment, where, so there is no plan right now to improve that multipurpose field.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Gupta?
Is there, I know for Inglewood, we decided to use a cork infill. Is that a decision that, you know, it covers all of our field enhancements going forward, or is that made on a case-by-case basis?
I would say it's on a case-by-case basis. We have not established a city standard, however. We are using that both at Eastlake High School Field Number Three, and we will be using cork infill at Inglewood Middle School. So there, it is likely that we would use that at East Sammamish Park as well, and that will be something we would bring back to you when, after the design is done, if that's the recommendation.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else from Council or anyone like to make the motion?
I can make the motion if they put it. There we go. I move that we authorize the City Manager to execute a contract with DA Hogan and Associates Incorporated for planning, design, and construction administration services for baseball field improvements at East Sammamish Park.
Second.
And I just want to say I have many fond memories of that park, so thank you.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any other comments or suggestions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Awesome. Well, thank you, Dave and Shelby and Kevin. I think, though, Kevin and Anjali might be sticking around just for a second, if that's all right? Great. Thank you, Dave and Shelby. Okay, so back to our consent item number six, the DNR land transfer. Councilmember Trean?
Yeah, Kevin or Anjali, if you hang out just a second. So I get that there's no cost to, okay, so we're going to, the idea is to send a letter of support to, in a sense, get 40 acres of land transferred over to Sammamish, City of Sammamish. So there's no cost to that part. The question I had was this additional cost following the acquisition. Do we, so what's include, I mean, what are we looking at there? Are we looking at master planning and, you know, half a million dollars, a million dollars? What's the price tag that we're going to put on this?
The cost after acquisition would be just the cost of owning the land. For instance, you know, a tree falls over a fence or something like that, it'd be repairing the fence or removing a hazardous tree, that sort of thing. The, I don't have the restrictions. I know that there was public comment about restrictions on the on the land. I don't have that specific document in mind, but the DNR with a trust land transfer requires that the receiving agent, which would be the city, enhance or preserve its ecological value and public benefit. And the intent, as we, as your Parks Department looked at this property and this opportunity, the intent would be that it would be a passive park, very little development, mainly trails. If you have seen, which I'm sure a lot of you know this property, it is, there's a lot of topography in there, and there's a mature stand of trees. It's also fairly close or adjacent across the road to the State Park, Lake Sammamish State Park property, own property. There's a camp on the south side of the road there. So we just really see it as a great opportunity for hiking trails primarily.
And a cost to that?
It would be the cost of developing trails.
We would acquire it, and as Kevin pointed out, the initial cost would be to just the upkeep of the land in its current form. If we were to do a master plan, we would bring an amount of about, our master plans range from 100,000 to 200,000, and we would bring that to Council for consideration and work on the master plan. And based on what is designed, we would then budget what it would cost to make those improvements, and that number would also depend on what you propose in the master plan. So not much for now, and I'll just add that when we did the land acquisition strategy, preserving tree canopy was a high priority at the time, and this was one of the parcels that did rise to the top. The city initially reached out to the Department of Natural Resources to acquire this property to purchase it, but lucky for us that this land transfer program got revitalized, and we might be able to now get the land for no cost to the city initially. We also have an 11-acre parcel at the north end of the city that we were able to get for a fairly low price from King County, so that becomes like your gateway to the north that's preserved forevermore, that you'll have that dense tree canopy, and this DNR parcel will serve as your gateway from the south.
Thank you. So I move to, what is it, that the City Council agree to provide a letter of support for the city's trust land transfer application for DNR parcel number 1624069008.
Second. All right, moved and seconded. Would anyone else like to speak to that?
I'd just like to say excellent job, and it's definitely one of the number one priorities I have for acquiring land here for preservation. So thank you very much to the staff bringing this forward. Thank you.
Great. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All right, great, thank you. Before you leave, did you want to mention what's happening Friday?
Sure.
Or is that for you, Scott? Sorry.
No, no, take it away.
You can't leave, Anjali.
Well, it is my absolute pleasure to invite all of you for the soft opening or partial opening of Big Rock South this Friday at 11 o'clock. It was home to Mary Piggott for 40 years, and she will be joining us, so we look forward to seeing you there. We also have the Pollinator Project as part of Becoming a B-City. We have a couple hundred panels that are painted and up for view as well. And after Friday, the public will be welcome to walk all the way from Beaton Hill Park to Southeast 20th Street.
Awesome. So exciting. Thank you all. Yay. Hey, Parks. All right. Always like to end on a high note. Scott, do you have any reports?
Thank you, Mayor. I like following, ending on a high note, and then you turn to me. Appreciate that.
No pressure.
And then, you know, you stole the fun stuff. No, I do want to put a pre-plug in just to get it on the radar. April 20th is our Earth Day celebration, expecting a big one this year. I know the Parks Team is doing a lot of work preparing for that, and particularly as it's our Silver Jubilee year, really hoping everyone comes out and joins us for that. So we, there's one, there was a letter in the packet that we added. That is in response to the students who came to the council meeting and Sustainability Commission, asking for council support. So this is a letter to, for if council approves, that we'll send off to the school district. So with that, I will turn it over, Mayor, to you for, yeah, I think if you want to, sure, do it by motion, that's fine.
Councilmember Stewart?
I move we approve the letter to the Iskwa School District on behalf of the students to support the climate action goals in their facilities planning.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Would you like to speak to that?
I'm just so excited. Thank you.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, thank you.
Another high note, see?
There you go. Unless he has more.
Just one, just one last, one last, one last item, and it's not a big one. I just want to remind that, believe it or not, we are, we finished our third meeting of the month, and we do not have a meeting next month, so this, the next, you know.
You tried.
Thank you. Everybody gets April off. Next week, we have no meetings, so we will, we will be back in session on April 2nd, I believe.
All right, does anyone else have anything? Yeah, Councilmember O'Farrell?
I just want to let Council know I'll be attending wire eight meeting on, Riot Eight Meeting on the 21st and hope to get an update on all things Salmon Recovery and how that's progressing and how they got on with the legislature in that last session. So I'll let you guys know.
Deputy Mayor Howe?
Sorry. Sent, Council, just a quick note about the the meeting that-
I sent council just a quick note about the meeting that I had with the So Call Me Tribe this morning, this morning, yesterday morning, sorry. And hopefully, there'll be another meeting towards the end of April. They're in the process of, they wanted to wait until after their elections. For tribal elections, it's a process where they raise their hands, saying, "I want to be a council member in February." And when they vote in May, it's like, it's a vote and you're installed that same day. So it's very efficient, it's very speedy, and it's very comprehensive. But, you know, I urge you guys to take the opportunity, if you can, if you can get the time away for an hour, because they are really strict, we only meet for an hour. The other thing I'll mention is that I'll be visiting Nicholsville tomorrow and spending most of the day with them, trying to understand just how they self-govern for congregate housing, and just get a better understanding of just how some of our more vulnerable residents are surviving and managing themselves. So if that's something you guys are interested in, I'll write up a brief report so that you guys can understand what's going on there.
Councilmember Lam?
I have a Board of Health meeting on Thursday, and the main topic is going to be on King County opioid response. I'll provide follow-up after the meeting.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? All right, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Move we adjourn?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Great, good evening, everyone.